If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A call this meeting to order at five thirty. The roll call. Toby O., Howard here, Lingle Smith.
Here.
And Clerk Wellshimer's here. Mr. Weeden is downstate at an appointment. Now we have to decide on who wants to be the moderator of the meeting. We're doing the last.
I thought you were gonna say something else.
So we're on paper that carries the the matter. Okay.
Okay, we have a public comment and each comment is limited to three minutes. Any public comment?
Yeah, I'll do a public comment. Mike Wolf from Parks Rec Commissioner and I wanted to give a quick update on things and I'm doing it during this time. Got dogs. I gotta go out there at home and just wanted to give you a quick update on some stuff. So big one was we got all the Pioneer Trails all opened up, accessibility trail blown up and it looks good down there. That's been a good one. East Park update there is, you know, I don't know if you guys have been down there to mass. So we sought out some bids for fall cleanup and then take over in the spring. But at this time Peggy's wasn't taking any new work. So we're gonna put together our own work bee and clean the thing up in the fall and clean bushes up and such like that. So that's a big one. And then entertain bids for the spring and for the gardens and so that's to be to come. The other one was the trash can lids that are in bad shape and our research is coming back for the ones the size that fits where we're at in our discussions trying to, and people that don't know about, sorry, don't want to what's the title of it? People that don't know about, we're people that don't know about garbage cans and we're trying to do our due diligence and make a good informed decision there. Three hundred and fifty dollars a pop. So nine of them are needed and spread our twelve hundred. And that's without the cable. And I think that was something to was sharing would be really helpful at the cable, which is much more cost than so that's something I think you might, or that would be something that considering the discussion of where we're at that with that one. Support Bob in the situation that he's in and Kevin Lowe is taking on more of the correspondence with Raider and Beckett on the progress and resort bike park and keeping that moving on in the next action item. We have more to, you know, report out on that here at this next, this next session. Survey's kind of going. He wasn't there. Wasn't Ken Lane was not in our last meeting, but he was the update on all the details of wherever the survey everything's like there. Actually wrapping up by the end of fall.
On the trash can lids, is that something you're thinking like for next year?
There's still a use, but I'm in almost that mentality right now is like, like, should we just we're almost done, ready to shut the park down and should we
Yeah, driving wise, we're just doing
Yeah, I mean, do a little bit more research out there, you know, is there kind of
We've all been researching it. It's almost like we have
Yeah, you guys, they're expensive. I think there's no way around it. And part of me was like, should we just look at upgrading and doing new
A different type?
A different type of can that, you know, it's gonna it's, I think that park is just the shining star of resort township here and the, having me really looking tip top shape would be a nice thing going into next spring. But the fall cleanup is gonna take place. There's like, you can't even walk around the pavilion without hitting your head and go in the bathroom. It just, you know, the trees need to be trimmed and have a volunteer effort in our community.
With the lids, you can't piece them.
Right.
It's gonna have to be the whole thing.
Yeah. I feel like we do a big purchase and they don't fit or they're not like in there snug and I'm that, you know, the where the manufacturer was on these currently. I'll track that down to get get ones that have replaceable tops too. Good quality product. So yes, probably spraying, I don't fret with one as soon as possible. I think they're valid down there, but that sounds like more realistic there to make a good informed purchase. I'm surprised how expensive.
I don't know. Any other public comment? Thank you.
Sue Laurie from the press drive. I haven't been here the last couple of months, maybe, but I just wanted, I didn't see it on the agenda. I just wanted to put in a suggestion, tell us perhaps I know earlier this year, our favorite topic, the compost site. You know, the three days has been fine for now, but there was when we opened up this to start where you said maybe in the fall when leaves start dropping, the hours may be extended because I don't think three days is gonna do it when everybody starts following the leaves out there. Especially leaves. You know, the rain leaf that happens is coming out on the weekends and I don't want, I don't want to haul wet leaves. They're heavy. They're horrible. I'm just wanting, I don't know, you know, environmental committee who needs to take it up, but if you consider at least maybe for the last month from, from October to like the middle of November when it closes, extending it a couple more days, like have it, you know, birthday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, when there's something, having it so that you can play the weather and you can get the load of leaves out there.
We can talk about it at our next meeting.
Next meeting. All right. All right. That'd be great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Online? Okay. Purple of the agenda. Any additions or edits?
Can't add anything to the agenda because we don't have a full word.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the gentleman's present.
I'll support. I thought you were gonna or no?
Correspondents.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda approval. Passes, any correspondence?
Yes. Well, first I'll start with the letter of, that I got from Mr. Weeden. That he will not be in attendance tonight as I have a conflicting longstanding virtual appointment with his U of M medical team. And a couple of matters that he would like us to be aware of is the centennial conference room table project has been well received. We are not quite to the goal, but over two thirds of the finances have been pledged. Several families have not yet responded. On Friday, he'll be meeting with the local FEMA representative about the ice storm damage. There have been new brighter lights installed at East Bath, East Park bathrooms. And then he didn't see on the agenda about the new computer request for himself and the treasurer. Well, that kind of falls under the Office three sixty-five that we have in the pending. And the resort bike park project, he's working with Tim Knutson to get some quotes going. He is continuing to contact forestry people. One did return his call and said they would get back to him in a few weeks, but they were taking work at the time to be completed in November. And then we got a five thousand dollar, or we got a bill from the landscaping people that he's rather confused with the five thousand dollar stone addition to our landscape quote where the job was completed even before the quote was received. Also, the additional plantings, which was performed without board discussion and approval on what was to be planted. And I know the planning has been budgeted, but the actual decision of what to be purchased was not made by the board. I see nothing in the minutes about those and have never been contacted about those additions. Shouldn't these things have been brought up before a board meeting? And are not, are not the board members who have made these decisions, the same ones who have had issues in the past claiming that items were paid, were not brought before the board for approval? Do we have a two tiered system in place in the resort township? He'll explore to our explanation.
Well, we don't know anything about the plantings. But for the stone outback, Mr. Hoffman approached Al and I when he was here working to have the stone and wanted to know what we were, our plans were for back there because there was nothing in the quote or grass or anything to be in there. And he said to have it done now would be cheaper than to have them come back. And because we didn't do the plantings here, it would be fifteen hundred dollars away from the five thousand. So it would be thirty five hundred dollars. That was actually more nets putting the rock and the other stuff down there. So it would stop the erosion. So guess we made a last minute split decision to
Not sure, not sure what he's talking about with the plantings.
And there is nothing planted unless you guys planted something.
There's plenty along here.
There is? Then they did it on their own.
Yeah.
They weren't supposed to.
We got the, not the top tier, but the bottom tier, the first tier of that wall. There's plenty all along there.
They weren't supposed to do that.
I couldn't tell you what it is. Okay. Yeah, there's several.
So we didn't know.
We have no idea.
We were told not to, told them not to do it, that we would figure out something that we wanted to do in there. But they planted them?
Yeah. Yeah, it's in, it's in the invoice that they planted, right?
Yeah, but we never said anything to plant.
Right. We didn't tell them what kind of plants we wanted.
We were gonna do it.
Right.
Because they told us it would be fifteen hundred dollars cheaper if we, if they didn't plant the plants. Okay, well, I have to talk to them about that also.
Another piece of correspondence.
Okay.
Uh, we got a FOIA request from Mrs. Wiley. And it was basically she wanted to, she wanted copies of Bob's emails stating the complaints of the capital site, you know, that it's not open all the time and it's not accepting larger brush and, and that type of thing. While I denied the, the request. And that was based on Bob getting back to me saying that he didn't have any emails. He didn't have any copies of the emails. He couldn't find any copies of the emails. So therefore he didn't produce me any emails. So I had to deny the request. So she is her letter to me is, I would like to file an appeal to be heard by the Board of Trustees at the next scheduled meeting to have Mr. Weeden's emails reviewed by another board member to verify he has no emails that were requested from the FOIA. She reviewed the video, the last Board of Trustees meeting and Weeden clearly states that he has emails, yet he refuses to produce the emails to the board or hold onto emails as required for a set amount of time by the state of Michigan. Either one of these emails never existed or or, and he can inform the Board of Trustees, they did not exist, or to explain why he is deleting emails that are required to be held per the state of Michigan. Considering he had just completed his ethics class due to actions of the assessor, I believe it is the best interest of the township supervisor reading the public explaining his actions to the board of where the emails are, or if no emails exist that be referenced during the August Board of Trustees meeting. There's a reason for stating he had emails. General correspondence whether received electronic or papers to be made public to the public along with corresponding response supervisor weakness, very experienced in deleting that filing correspondence as required by the state of Michigan. Isn't that something Board of Trustees or residents should take like? She looks forward to hearing his response at the next meeting, well, unfortunately he's downstate, as to where the emails are and publicly said existed. So there's her response to the appeal that she wants to or I'm sorry, her response to the denial is her appeal. So reaching out to the lawyer, I know what our next step is. Says that the Board of, the trustees is not considered to have received the appeal until the first regularly scheduled board meeting tonight. And within ten business days after receiving the appeal, the board must do one of the following. Reverse the denial. Issue a written notice to the requester of holding the denial. Reverse the disclosure denial in part and issue a written notice to the requester of holding the denial in part. Issue a notice extending or not more than ten business days, the period during which the board will respond to the appeal. If the board wanted to have a third party search his email for responsive records, I suppose they could do that. But if they go that route, I suggest they make themselves available for the next biz, of the next ten business day extension period while Bob's emails are searched.
Has Mr. Weeden got that information?
He has not gotten a copy of this. Or did he?
Yeah, I think the next step would definitely be to give it to him and have him publicly make, yeah, respond some way.
Get his response by the next month.
Right. I don't, I mean, we have a ten day limit.
So we have ten days. And then we'll have to have a special meeting too.
Unless Mrs. Wiley's open to. I guess we need to know what his
So he said he doesn't have the email.
Right.
Correct.
Like he never got any.
Right.
So what does it prove going through all this?
Maybe lie.
He said he doesn't have the emails that he said he had last month.
Right.
So what does it prove to have someone go through his emails to verify?
To see if there are, see if there are some.
Tammy would like to comment.
Like it doesn't.
Rufus Suzanne, can you guys hear me? Carrie, Tim?
Yes, now we can.
Um, I would, I would be open to allowing you guys to give to, you know, thirty days considering Bob is the sole purpose is that I believe Bob needs to be held accountable for the things he tells the board during meetings. He told the board in August that he had email complaints. But yet, like I said, the FOIA one requested, and those are public records that he then didn't have emails. And if those emails are not still in his computer, then he is not doing what he is required to do, which is to hold on to them for one year and one day. And we have to be able to trust in our public servants to have the information made available to the public that they're going to say they have. And so there's only three scenarios here. Either one, they never existed. Two, they existed and he deleted them, which he shouldn't have. Or three, he's just not giving them up because he didn't even want to give them to you guys at the last board meeting when Suzanne said, you haven't shared those with us, Bob. As the environmental committee. And to me, that shows that he's not moving forward on this site in good faith. And, you know, he's supposed to have gotten bids and things like that. And we just want to hold him accountable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know what, what timeframe we're talking about emails. I emailed him earlier this spring when I was about started and I can verify that one of my names too. This is before it
Before it opened. He's dating since it opened.
Since it opened. Okay, that's what I want to know.
Is what the
I'll reset.
Well, I think we
But
We need to
Since it opened, so you may not have emails, but I can tell you the word of mouth that the sentiment is valid. People are and I'm happy with the way it is. And maybe not everybody can come, whatever. That's why I came tonight to just like, you know, if it takes an email and you, because you should email someone else. That's fine. But for the last, you know, on November, I remember I talked to three of my neighbors before I came to them. They're like you know. And we have to extend the hours for things like that. So people that
When is the next environmental meeting?
Next month. First of them.
Miss, that's up. You guys can put on your agenda to review opening it another day or two. Because it is
Well, it is opening, but it's also the environmental committee. We are the ones volunteering to open it.
Right.
And Mrs. Wiley is the ones volunteering to close it.
So that, that was to start with, but you know, this plan, something should have been a plan to open and close more than that. And what are you gonna do next year? Hopefully it'll be
This was just to get through this year and then next year will be a difference.
I mean, I was I'm not, I'm usually not that untimely, but, but two weeks ago, I went on a Sunday trying to get my stuff out there. And I got there seven minutes to five and it was already gone. So luckily, I went through the bit, I just had bids and I got out of my car and I walked him around.
I think that was the day that somebody didn't open it at all.
Well, maybe that was it. I don't know. I thought, huh. I'm trying to, I mean, I didn't want to be last minute, but
Yeah. I mean, this is basically not a question of the compost site. This is a question of, we heard that there were emails that we were told and we said, well, what were the complaints? You know, can you tell us? Can you show us? And then now he doesn't have them. So that's kind of the issue here. We are willing to listen to the public, obviously, because we're here for you.
Right.
And we want to know how to do better and improve our systems. So obviously, you know, that we want to do and we're gonna talk about it the next meeting.
No, what timeframe are you talking about emails?
Right. So that was, he said after we made the decision for this summer and that he was getting complaints about the limited days open. And then he's gotten emails, but when I asked to see the emails even, I think at the last meeting, he said that you, they only want to talk to him, nobody else. So we just, yeah, we, we need to talk about it with the leaves coming and that sort of thing. But he does need to be held accountable.
Yes.
This is, I mean. So he needs, at the next meeting, he needs to come up with emails or why he said
A response as to why
Right.
Were not available. Yeah. Okay.
And be made to us and at publicly in the meetings. Yes.
Like, you know, even Tammy said, you know, she can go thirty days on it. So we'll just do it at the next meeting as an agenda.
So thank you to Mrs. Wiley for holding on. All right. Any other correspondence? All right, on the letter G, minutes of previous meetings. So we have meetings from the August twelfth, special meeting.
August twelfth, regular meeting, August twelfth, special meeting and August twelfth.
Close session.
Close, close session.
We're going on the website for ten.
The closed session is not.
Okay. Is the special meeting? That go on the website?
We had to go on this closed session, so.
That was all that.
All the special meeting was, they made a motion to go into closed session. We went into closed session, made a motion, come out of closed session. We voted on the topic and
Understood. Thank you.
So it's just like a quick special meeting.
All right, I make a motion to approve minutes of in closed session. Yes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have the minutes banned because they shredded it.
Sure.
Yep, of course we do.
Unfinished business. Number one, we have built.
You, you just did the closed sessions.
Oh, yeah, regular meeting.
You had, you have the regular meeting and you had the special.
All right. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the right, uh, regular meeting minutes for them.
Second. All those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting minutes passed. Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, building construction discussion. Anything with that?
Just There were a couple of things we actually, they had sent us a final bill and I would tell, we would have ten thousand dollars for them to finish two things. The floor in the fire hall had to have epoxy. Is that what it had to do epoxy on it? And then there was a hole. The whole thing that was in the roof that had to be re-roofed over top of that.
Where the, the power mask. The power mask.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's one other thing is that they gave a spare carpet that I have to talk to her about. Because we were actually supposed to have, there was supposed to be like a center line going down there of a different carpet. So we don't have any spears in case these get bad. So we'll get a box of those in, but other than that, everything is done, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Common angle. All right. So I gave everybody the thing on how the windows eleven up to upgrade them. I went through and so right now we have the zoning, Mr. Wheaton's in his room, Rufus's in his room. All right. Those all need to be upgraded to windows eleven. Mr. Wheaton's laptop was supposed to also be upgraded, but now he wants a new laptop. And I don't know why we would get a new laptop when it can be upgraded to eleven. And do we have to go through common angle? We don't have to go through them, right? I don't get computers.
No, I actually for the computer for my office, I looked online and I can get it from Dell for about seven hundred, eight, eight hundred dollars versus they're quoting at nine ninety-five.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know why Bob needs a four thousand dollar laptop.
What?
Well, that's, that's right. So it's actually sixteen hundred.
Still sixteen, that's
That's still
High. That's a mega.
Yeah.
And then, um, I know on here on the one list that has the workstations to upgrade from ten to eleven, there are two of them on there for Bob and one of them is his home personal computer. When he first bought that computer, he bought the computer and at that time we did pay to up, to load like the Excel and all the Windows stuff on there. But I don't know how everybody feels about upgrading it. I mean, so he has a laptop, a desktop at home plus a desktop.
That doesn't even make sense. He has a laptop, he can bring it both places.
Well, he has a desktop here, so a laptop he can use at home to upgrade. I mean, to you. And then I don't know why Holly Angellary is on here. Oh, is that that one?
It's this one.
Okay.
Or, yeah, RTL eleven is
But do we need that? I mean, if all we do is use that for this, we don't do for anything else on there, do we?
No, we just use it for, just for the
So I mean, it's not like we do any office work on there.
No, we don't do any office work on here and you know, the only thing is that, no, yeah, Windows ten is going away, so they're not
Ten won't be supported. So something happens, the computers choke.
In, you know, the security and that. So it's not, yeah. Like this one here is not, I would, I would say it's not where we have to upgrade it.
Okay, so then we don't need to do that.
We're still functioning for what we're doing.
All right. So that can go off.
We'll zoom, we'll still support zoom. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's just that Microsoft's not sending out any updates or security features.
Or security devices. Right. Sometimes zoom, sometimes zooming those guys change.
Yeah.
You can do it later.
All right.
So this, this is for a new computer for Bob. That's what you're telling him?
A new laptop. But the laptop he currently has can be up
A new laptop, but the laptop he currently has can be upgraded to eleven.
Well, there's a desktop and a laptop.
The desktop is mine, cause mine is a twelve or thirteen. But I.
Your desktop's the oldest.
I mean, I, I would like to see other prices to compare.
Well, and when I was checking into this, they said that the. The other laptop of his hadn't been into since May.
Hadn't been what?
Hadn't been logged into since May.
Well, yeah, that doesn't make.
Well, irregardless, we need another.
We need other prices to compare.
Then we can worry about that.
But I think we should still um have. What is it? Come you. Come in and take a look at what we have to see if we actually need everything that. They're telling us.
Hundred percent agree with that statement, yes. This is getting crazy.
Yeah. And so I, I make the motion that we have W, whatever his name is.
Alan Cubby, open Cubby or computers.
That is W, computer, computers come in and just oversee. He actually was talking to Rufus inside that.
He's coming to the office tomorrow.
He thinks that he can actually upgrade my computer, so I don't have to have anyone, because everything's on the mainframe. So all I'm doing is login there to get.
Well, I, I, I'm surprised that they're charging for an upgrade from ten to eleven. I just did all ours at work for free.
Yeah.
It's like. Yeah, that's their, that's their labor charge.
To hit the icon that says download now?
Oh, well, then we don't need to do that.
No.
I mean, talk to Al. I don't know about.
Okay.
It's a free upgrade.
Well, that's one thing with common ego that any, any installation that goes onto these things, they have to approve. They have.
You might wanna think about establishing standard refresh policy, so these options that's are not like a thing of the future, it's just.
Good thing you're gonna have troubles with, I could tell you this, is why you have to use common angle or somebody like that is because your BSNA system with Windows eleven. Major problems.
Okay.
I, I understand what you're saying, but, but I know because we just updated over there last month and they had a lot of problems.
So they do have the issue, so.
So, so with that said, make sure that if there, when you do do the update, you don't have anything you gotta deal with on BSNA until. A couple of days later, because it takes a while to get.
Alright.
Okay, so we will table that to get.
We have a motion on table.
To have Alan come in.
I support that. All those in favor. Rebeing done. Uh, the computer systems, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
It may be when he's here, Rufus, he can. Look at update and see if it's just something you can do.
Yeah.
I think they kinda get you over a barrel. And then you have no choice.
Are we under contract with them?
Not these parts.
But it, but it's like the, the maintenance and all that.
Yeah, but.
You can, so we'll need to find out when that ends.
You can usually cancel it.
I don't think it ever ends. It's been the same price except for we just added the other um. Security thing last year, and up until that point, it had been the same price for ever.
But he's, when I talked to him off. You know, at the, at the station there, he said that, you know, some of his other clients that has, he's taken over, they've.
I don't know so much we wanna take over, but to know.
But he's taken over, but you know, because of the contract, they were under contract, they had to wait or they had to give them so much notice.
Okay, alright. Well, save one, so maybe it's. This, and you can check on the. Contract.
Yes.
Alright, number three, assessor duties. Unfortunately, I did not do anything.
We need to work on that.
From last month, so we will, I will for sure have something for the next meeting.
Well, maybe you and I can get together.
Yeah. Alright, number four, resort park, um, park beach reclamation, kinda talked about. A little bit of that. So is that what Beckett Raider is getting?
That's my understanding, right? They're, they're getting the bids.
Well, as of the beginning of last month, after our meeting here, I asked. They had not gotten the full, the prints. So that's probably why we have not gotten them. Did you get a copy of them?
No.
So. I mean, I think something there might have to change.
Tell who asked Prince.
Bob must have gotten them from the guy that they. That we hired to do. To, to do all the work down there and then he, they sent a file supposedly to Bob and then he was supposed to send it to Beckett Raider.
And he was supposed to forward that on to us too.
And in July, as of July, they did not have it. Beckett Raider did not. So. I mean, that eagle thing only lasts for so long and I know that it's been what, year and a half now? That we. I don't know, it seems like it's been a while. I don't know how long you get approval for. Cause that was a big ordeal to get that also.
Okay, new business, Michigan Township Association news.
I didn't make a copy of it. We have, we do it every year and it's. If there's any attorney fees, they help you look at that type of stuff, so.
Do you know how much it was? What is standard you do it?
You have, you have like your standard and then you have like a little add-on where it covers the. Luncheon videos that you want, you know, the tune in and watch the, the Zoom and know they're, some of those are really important, plus it. You can access the library and look at past recordings of that stuff.
I forget, I was so busy today taking emails. I had like a hundred people in here today. I've never had that. Um, it's seven thousand five thirty-seven. Did that fit you, any of the trainings also that you wanna do?
Please take a motion to.
I'll raise check out for it.
Hey, I'm, I'll make a motion to approve for the uh Michigan Township Association news.
I support that. All those in favor of approving that bill? Bill passes. Alright, committee report, Mr. White.
Guys, quick tonight. Uh, Tony had a very good year in the Parks and Recreation, had a secret record. Uh, many trails, as we have cleaned and we're still cleaning trails, we're still cleaning. These little roads. We're looking at it probably gonna cost us a little over five hundred thousand dollars and we're all done. We're still tripping. We do have one done, but we're still tripping. Um, the fair was great, record attendance, four eight made over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from kids.
Wonder town.
The uh, the um, peril, the midway record numbers, which means we get a good.
One, one question, the, the gate sales. I see other groups have, you know, bound, they volunteered to do the gate. Do they, do they get a portion of those?
They give, they, we make a donation to them.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had the cheerleaders from East Jordan, we've had softball teams. You've had the honor society from the high school. You know, helps them.
Perfect.
Um, right now, we're in our budget process. We're like everybody else and all the nonprofits that I serve on, uh waiting to hear what the state does. So it's a way to see what we're working forward as large, what we know as revenue. And uh, that's where we stand right now, end of the, we're wrapping up our end of the summer. Hoping it extends a little longer so we can enjoy this winter fall with. Uh, little less population. Any question? Alright, Tim, you're up.
Alright, so for the planning commission, um. We had two cases, um, both were approved. One was case number six dash two zero two five. Was for an accessory building, uh, on Mark Check Road. Basically, they were asking for an exception from a fourteen to a fifteen foot. Uh, which was approved. The second was case number seven dash two zero two five, again accessories building. This one was on Lake Grove. And the application was for sixteen hundred square foot building. Um, as opposed to the fourteen hundred foot allowed in that district or its own area, so. Again, asking for an exception, which was approved. And the final thing is, um, we have three student applications now and so we're having new interviews and. Picking up a new student uh here, hopefully.
Did the other one graduate?
Um, zoning board of appeals, we were supposed to meet yesterday, but the applicant withdrew, so. Uh, possibly next month. But no meeting was held since last report.
Thank you. Our track.
The Potashki rec. This Thursday is, excuse me, next Thursday is the Washington Park picnic and they have um a picture of what they're getting. Their concept to upgrade is gonna be there, so they're gonna, people can make comments, that type of thing. They've been working with Beckett Raider on all their perks. And so they have hot dogs and then all the people in the area bring a dish to pass. That's about it. We already got it, yeah.
Am I supposed to get on that committee? Or what's the deal?
Yeah, so.
Um. We did not have any, okay. Um, fire?
Well, we'll do the road admission then.
Oh, do you have it?
Well, we got the, we got the road report from the road commission. That I forwarded to you guys. And then we can discuss at the next meeting what, what we wanna do. And then we have that, we have the. Meeting with the road commission in October.
Like that Monday at six o'clock or something.
October sixth.
Hey, that's it.
Okay, thanks, fire.
So we uh, we prepped a, we burned a house and a garage at a barn over on the corner of uh, inner, or uh, US one thirty-one in. This last uh month, um, we prepped the garage and burned it and we prepped the house and burnt that the following Thursday. We did do a drill with the Lansing Fire Department. They asked us to come up and uh, um. Do a drill with them with our ladder trucks. We did that with forty calls. We uh, installed sixteen smoke detectors and three sil, three CO alarms. Um, one of the things about the road commission, um. We had an accident in Intertown and uh, uh Blackford Road this week or last week, I think it was. Um, guy was going southbound on Blackford Road and never stopped and came up and hit a lady, uh, T-boulder basically. After looking at that incident, um. It was determined not. That part of it, but afterward I'd driven. Blackford Road and you could not see the stop sign going southbound on Blackford. Before you get to Intertown Road, the trees had overgrown, that's so bad that you couldn't see it. So I reached out to the road commission and they came out, um. Yesterday and trimmed that back and uh, at least made it sufficiently see the stop sign.
Thank you. Cemetery?
No meeting. Next month.
Anything with local revenue?
No.
Fire board?
Well, I guess with.
We didn't have a meeting last month.
No, we did.
With the, while we're on the fire board. Jennifer made a comment that says, please disclose the basic facts surrounding the Pete, Pete Chalini lawsuit. Who, who are the parties? What are the causes of the action? What is the relief solid in the complaint? What are the basic facts alleged, the complaint, if this is a whistleblower type complaint, who does the plaintiff alleged did the alleged wrongful acts? That's her comment.
Oh, we can see if we came to an agreement.
That's it. Thank you. Uh, library?
Nobody yet.
Member reports? Was there anything else from supervisor? Assessor, um treasurer?
No, busy.
Clerk?
Nothing.
Howard?
None.
I don't have anything. Alright. With that motion for per diem, general bills, payroll, fire department bills. Everybody got their sheet? By email? Any questions? Comments? I don't need a motion. You're approved.
I don't have anything. Anybody have anything? Make a motion to uh. Affirm payment for the per diem, general bills, payroll, fire department bills.
I support. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright. Approved. Open to public comment?
Yes. Question, I guess much in the house, we're about five months into the year now. Is there a point, I mean, do we bring a year-to-date budget to any of these meetings, saying here's where we're at? Monthly financial reports?
And usually the end of September, I bring it.
So you have.
Every three months, yeah.
Three months, was there one done three months ago?
I just, I mean, of where I'm at to make any changes, but we haven't had to make any changes.
Yeah, I was basically saying how we are compared to budget, I guess, or you know, and, and part of that goes to. As you've seen me here before, but the uh, based on the uh, the way this building was done versus budget. You know, I mean, I think it's, it's a, it behooves the board to pay exceptionally close attention to the budget, cause I don't think we have huge excesses of money on any target. As, as has been said, and you know, I mean, we all know that take care of the cents, the dollars will take care of themselves, so I think that's kind of a. And if there are issues that they get addressed fairly early, so we can kind of deal with them. Um, and then I guess the last comment I have, and I don't. I mean, I think there's enough, I don't have Bob here, but just reading the minutes, the level of arrogance. It just floors me and I mean, I've lived in the township now twenty-some years. I don't really get it, cause twenty-two years ago I came to a board meeting as part of the leadership little traverse. And it was completely dysfunctional. My wife came about four or five years ago and that was a dysfunctional meeting. And I mean, quite honestly, they still are in many ways, shapes and forms, and I, I just don't get it. As to. Why people can't play nice. And I get this sense that there's a entitlement for families who've been here forever or whatever. And, and it, it doesn't make sense to me, the fact that your family's been here for a hundred and fifty years is great. But it doesn't necessarily impact, and it certainly gives you institutional knowledge, I get that. But, you know, and to just say, I'm the boss and. You know, people only wanna talk to me, that's crap. I mean, I think when it comes to decisions here, you guys, he's only one vote. Amongst five. So I think it's, it's frustrating to uh consistently come to meetings. When questions get asked, he, he's exceptionally dismissive. And, you know, I think it's a, it's unfortunate because the board doesn't need to be. Doesn't need to be this way.
So I agree.
I'd like to kind of piggyback, I feel like you brought it up, it's a comment I wanted to make, I read. The, the minutes from a general meeting last, and I was sitting at a pub. At the, the, he calls it arrogant, I call it pettiness. As far as I, I'm concerned, unprofessional behavior. Not more than one person, unprofessional comments come from elected officials. I thought. Was a terrible example. And I would expect more. And a more, a better, like I said, a better functioning board. You, you can have disagreements. Without. And I know what was written in the minutes was probably accurate. But tone down then if you were, I was written here, it's probably worse than that. But I would hope. Like he said. To come together and, and try a little more professional behavior and get things done. To come together and, and try a little more professional behavior and get things done. Cause that's what I look to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanna tell you guys, thank you for, um, taking the fact that he didn't turn over the emails seriously. And it's, has nothing to do about if we like or don't like the compost site, cause honestly, we use it, obviously, we've been helping shut it. Um, I can't make the next environmental meeting, but I would be more than happy to close it an additional day. Um, Mondays would be better for me than Thursdays, but I could make Thursdays work if you did wanna extend it. Um, and I do see you guys trying to be more transparent with doing the Zoom. And doing where you can now re-watch the meetings on YouTube. Um, and from where we started nine years ago with the compost site to how the board is now, I think you guys are doing a great job. Um, I would like to ask you to put the bidding into the environmental committee and think about that over the next month. Because Bob has drawn a paycheck off of the compost site for the last nine years. And to allow the bids to come into someone who could potentially bid also on that job. Just seems like a conflict of interest, and I hope you guys would really consider putting that into the environmental committee as the one. Accepting the bids.
That is the way it should go, and all bids should be closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
Motion to adjourn.